Good evening and welcome to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for February 10th, 2020. If you have a cell phone, please place it on vibrator. Turn it off if you wish to speak amongst yourselves. Regarding your petition, please do so in the hallway to keep the decorum of the meeting. If you wish to sign in, strike that. If you wish to speak in opposition or favor of a motion, please sign in, state your name for the public record at the lecturn. Moving forward, under continued business, ZB 2020-3 for variance, Jennifer Sargent at 70 Fox Street, Section 5.1. Jennifer Sargent has applied for variance approval to build a single-family home on a local vacant lot at 70 Fox Street. The property is located on suburban, single-family SSF zoning district. 70 Fox Street requires variance approval under Section 5.1 to encourage on a minimum lot size, minimum frontage, and any other relief required of a Lowell zoning ordinance. The petition I hear this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Once again, Dave Crispin with the BSC Group. I am a civil engineer and land surveyor. We're helping out the sergeants who are sitting right on my right. Mr. Boosser, the builder, is here. We took your homework assignment a couple of weeks ago and quite busily put together a plan, which had been conceptualized, at least before we came the first time. And we've got about three minutes of information here to summarize that for you. The short story while she's getting that going is we have met with the abbot regarding the retaining wall, and there is an agreement together to basically proceed with the plan that we have. We met in their kitchen a week ago, chatted about it, and unfortunately, the attorneys have chatted about it a little bit too, but it's all simple. Let me see if we can make this work tonight. Just as a reminder, we are in that southeastern corner of town, right over at Drakehead. What do I want to do to make this? There we go. Again, these are slides that you've seen before, but this is a modest two-and-a-half-story house, very typical of the neighborhood. You had requested a survey landscape plan of the site. We have done a survey of the entire site, topographic boundary line. The boundaries are all marked. And just a point of note, I told you there was a 20-foot relief from the lower left-hand corner to the upper right. I lied. It was 19 feet. So not too bad for taking it from GIS information. The interesting thing about the site plan, the driveway goes off to the right of the structure towards Favell Drive. When this roadway was built back in the 90s, there's granite curb to the ends of that driveway, and then there's a bit concrete berm. So someone had a great thought back then that the driveway belonged there, and I agree with them. I didn't know the curbing was open like that at the time. But in short story, this house will drain, the driveway at least, will drain back to the street, very flat, kind of like 3/4 of a percent. We will grade around the building, and there will be basically a walkout basement. We have done the calculations for the two-and-a-half stories, building height, all that. It conforms. There's no need for variances on that. The heavy dark line on that is just erosion control at the bottom of the site. And I'm going to try to do this again. From a planting plan perspective, it's very simple. It goes with the neighborhood. It's mostly a lawman seed lawn, very much like the neighborhood. There are two trees in the upper right-hand corner of that site that we think we can save. One's a pine tree, one's a rum cherry. Maybe not the best one, but a couple of trees we think we can save. There are two in the bottom left-hand corner. Those are large oak trees and large maple trees. They can be saved, so that's good. All the other trees on the site get cut down because it's basically regrading the entire site. To the left of the driveway, as you're pulling in, we're envisioning a couple of flowering crabs or flowering fruit trees there with ground cover. In the front door, shrubbery landscaping. And across the very top of the site, which is where that big retaining wall is, that gets covered with a ground cover and shrubbery or pampas grass type thing to screen the rest of that fence off. The retaining wall, I've left this in the slide because it has been an issue, and it's shown in the yellow on that sketch. And I just want you to take an image, see what this is. It is, to the best we know, this is about 30 years old. It is a pressur-- well, a creosoted telephone pole structure. That's, in my opinion, in poor condition. And there is about a 10-page professional opinion memo to that effect, which we probably don't need to get into a lot of details on it. But I want to take one slide out of that report. If you look at this slide here, this is the low end, the highest part of the wall. That yellow line that's superimposed is a plum bob line hanging down. So in seven feet, that's about a foot and a half out of plum, that is, in my opinion, a dangerous wall when it's leaning that much. That's just one page out of the report, but I think it speaks volumes to the condition of the wall. Not to mention, there is earth coming through the wall. Some spots, the wood is punky, some spots not, but it's not good. So what did we agree with the neighbor? Very shortly, briefly, we're going to bury the side of this wall. And this is not to scale. The contour plan has it to scale, but literally, a two-and-a-half to one slope up to the top of that wall. We cut the top of those piles so they were all even, planted some shrubbery across the top, and cover it with ground cover. And that, in my opinion, will stabilize this completely for many, many, many years. Because staff asked originally on the height of the structures, the structure, sorry, you have a 35-foot maximum height after you go through the calculation, and my eyes are not doing too good at this distance, but I think it is 29 feet high, so we are much less than the height by the zoning code. We chatted a little bit last time about how the rest of the neighborhood does. All of the lots with the stars around this house would need variances today. So the neighborhood is established. I don't think this is going to be detrimental to do this last lot. Boy, I wish my eyes were better. What's that? Can I sneak up there for a second?
Certainly. Come on up. You can come inside, sir. I'll just grab the microphone there so you'll stay on public record. That'd be great.
Push the be on. There we go. So very quickly in summary, we've got 75 feet of frontage. We need 90. We've got 9,348 feet. We need 10,000. This is similar to the 70% of the lots that we showed around. I didn't detail this on the plan, but the roof drainage is entirely recharged for the 10-year storm, so shouldn't be any stormwater impacts from this. It is very consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And denial, as we talked last time, certainly would hurt not only this family life, would grandparents be able to see the grandchildren, and the grandchildren see the grandparents because they're all right there, but there's also a financial hardship. So there's some time involved in that. And I think that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Before we open the public, I want to place into the record that we have two letters of support from neighbors submitted to the record this evening, both in favor of this building. That being said, I'd like to open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up the board. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add, great presentation, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, point of order. I was not in attendance when this petition was initially brought before the board, and I am not qualified to sign the necessary affidavit to participate. So I would like to recuse myself from discussion.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. That being said, we do move to a 4-0 vote. So in order for this to pass, we'd have to have 4-0 approval, or 3-1 would be fatal, and send you back to the drawing board for the two-year deadlock period, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, for denial. So just keep that in mind as you hear the words of the board. Thank you, Mr. Brier. Oh, Mr. Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Great presentation, sir. Thank you for the updated plans, the site plan, the landscaping plan. And then also, I'm very impressed that you and the family sat down with the neighbors and kind of had a concrete plan for the retaining wall. I was very concerned with that. So it sounds like you have a viable plan. I think to me, Mr. Chairman, I feel like this variance can be granted. I see merits to this, the relief for this project. So I'll be voting in favor tonight. So I wish you the best of luck, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I'm really happy to see the presentation tonight. It really fills in a lot of the gaps that I thought we had in the first presentation. And I think that the solution for the retaining wall makes a lot of sense. I'm surprised that you're calling it a 2.2 and 1/2 slope. Is the site plan indicating that correctly? Because it doesn't seem as steep as a 2.2 to 1 slope on the site plan.
It's drawn at a 2.2 to 1, and the reason for that is we want to have some portion of a level area between the side of the house and the toe of that slope, so that you can get construction equipment down there, your lawnmower down there, what have you. Otherwise, there's no real way to get to the rear portion of the site. 2.2 to 1 is certainly a stable site, especially if it's landscaped, and there is no runoff coming over this thing from the top. So we're comfortable with that, and I put my stamp on that.
I'm well aware of what a 2.2 to 1 slope is. It appears, then, that the grading in the rear of the site is matching that. Is that, I mean, it really looks like if it's not matching that, it's 3 to 1, but it looks like it's--
We held that 2.2 to 1 slope as a maximum slope without a retaining wall. As I said earlier, we've got 19 feet of relief across this site, and all of the zoning bylaws on maximum height, 2.2 stories. There's a lot playing into this. So I didn't take it lightly, but I'm comfortable with the 2.2 to 1 as a stable slope.
No. Okay. My question was more about the rear of the site, the slope that you have there. If that's what we're talking about right now, that seems to be graded at the same steepness as the retaining--
In the backyard.
Okay. So but you have landscaped that with grass? I mean, you don't have ground cover on that. What are you two things--
That will be a lawman seed, but not mowed, probably, in all honesty. It will probably emerge as brush and whatnot. This, by the way, if you look at number 65, the house with the wall on it, which you don't have any information on, but I can tell you, the side slopes of that side of that house are much steeper than 2.2 to 1, and they've been there for 75 years or more.
Okay. All right. I noticed the grades, they're off the site at the retaining wall. So you're grading at the retaining wall at, I guess, the west corner. What kind of slope is that?
That's stoked up at about a 1 to 1 right now. And the reason for that is, we were dealing with our site plan. My client's obligation is not to stabilize the rest of his wall and the rest of his property. Will it ultimately be like that? It might be a little more, it might be a little less. There's still some final negotiations that are going to happen with the abbot. Are certainly going to be made stable, one way or the other.
Well, it looks as though it's drawn maybe a little incorrectly. The 205 contour should be tying into the existing contour, not the retaining wall. The 206 contour should be tying into the existing contour, not the retaining wall. The 207 contour should be tying into the existing contour, not the retaining wall. So can you look at that and see if it's drawn correctly? Because it seems like you're not resolving the contours correctly on his adjacent lot there. And not only did you provide a 1 to 1 without talking about riprap or some kind of stabilization method to solve it, and then you've got the contours of the 205, shouldn't that go right back into the existing contour rather than retaining wall, as well as the 206 and 207?
It does look like the proposed contours are tied into the wrong contours. My bad.
All right.
The intent there is to wrap the grade around that end of the wall.
That's what I thought. But it's not nearly as bad as what you're depicting, because you've only got contours 208 and--
Yeah, I think there's certainly room to make that work there.
I'd like to make a condition that you improve that contour as a plan that's submitted, so that you complete that, so that it actually is what you intend to build, and you determine what kind of stabilization, if stabilization is required, beyond a 2.2 to 1 slope. I'm guessing that you're probably looking at riprap or some kind of stabilization material. A 1 to 1 is not going to be grass, right?
Probably not. Again, the intent was just to show the grading wrapping around that corner of the building. We're going to need to do these plans for a building permit, so we'd be very happy to modify that plan.
I think as a condition, though, I'd like to see the plan that you intend to use for the construction, especially when it concerns the neighboring property, because I think that the neighbor should be getting something that makes sense.
No objection.
Okay. And then my last one is the width of the driveway at the street. Do we have a dimension on any of these plans that say what that is?
10-scale plan, so the end of the driveway is only about 15 feet wide. Part of what played into that is we were on a 12% roadway at that point.
I love 15 feet. 15 feet's wonderful. Could you just, on the revised site plan, show that dimension, so that we know that we're meeting--
No issue at all. No issue at all.
Okay. Once again, great resolution to the site. I like the fact that we're preserving some of these trees. I hope the maple stays. It's quite a well there, but it's not too deep. And I think the landscaping that you propose is quite nice. The fact that we're recharging is wonderful, so there's a lot of attributes that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise. So, nice job.
We do that on all of our projects, so--
No, you do a fine job. Thank you for submitting this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis Shaw.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the sentiments of my fellow board members with regards to, I appreciate the submission of the new plans that have everything with the landscaping, the topography, landscaping most especially. I know the information that was before us, though somewhat thorough, it was missing a couple of things, but you went back to the drawing board and got us all the information. I think we need to make a very informed decision on this, and based on the information that's provided. I'm in full support of this petition, and I wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I do appreciate, in your words, doing your homework. I think there was some concerns. I had a lot of concerns. I've visited the site several times, and I'm very pleased to hear that both the petitioner and the neighbor were able to come to an agreement on that retaining wall, because the safety and the integrity of it just isn't there. I was also concerned, and I knew that your slow concerns was going to be questioned for you from Mr. McCarthy, and that is going to be laid out as a condition prior to full approval to your building permit. I'm in full support of it. I think it's a wonderful neighborhood. I think the family setting speaks for itself. Generational living in the city of Massachusetts is great, but it's even greater when it happens here in Lowell and in our own home city. So I wish you and petitioners and everyone in that neighborhood, which is a very well-kept neighborhood to everyone over there, so I'm in full support. Any other conditions or concerns from the board? And seek a motion.
I just want to clarify, the condition is to submit new plans for final construction demonstrating improved contour and driveway dimensions. Correct?
Demonstrating corrected contours at the northwest corner of the existing retaining wall. I think that's the only area that we were concerned about that needed to be corrected. So it's the northwest corner of the existing retaining wall.
And I think it'd be favorable, Mr. Clark, if you could just reference 208 and 209, which is the concerns of Mr. McCarthy.
Yep. And so, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-3 for 70 Fox Street, aka 75 L Drive, for variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum-sized lot, minimum frontage to build a single-family home on a vacant lot, with the condition that the petitioner submit new plans for final construction of the corrected contour at the northeast corner of the retaining wall, as well as driveway dimensions. And it's a 208--
208, 208 and 209.
208, 209.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve 75 Fox Street, with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Very well, sir. You've been approved. We appreciate your time and your plan, and best of luck over there. Hopefully, the weather stays on your side, and you can get shovel and ground soon.
Just for my edification, do you guys want to see this plan back to you or just to the building department?
Everything will go back to DPD, and you just follow up with Fran in an email in the next couple of days, and she'll follow you through the process.
You want hard copies or electronic?
Uh, probably.
Both?
Both.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Good luck. Moving forward on the new business, ZB 2020-9, variance and special permit, Cronos Incorporated at 900 Chumpsford Street, Section 6.3. An application was submitted by Cronos seeking special permit and variance approval at 900 Chumpsford Street. The applicant is proposing to install an approximately 800-square-foot temporary wall sign. The property is located at a high-rise commercial HRC zoning district. The proposed project requires a special permit and variance from the zoning board of appeals under Section 6.3 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief required. Good evening. Welcome to the Lowell Zoning Board.
Hi. Thank you very much. Melanie McVeigh from Cronos. And we appeared before the board in February of 2019 last year to request permission for a rooftop sign located our global headquarters at 900 Chumpsford Street. The purpose of the sign was to recognize Cronos as the number-one large employer in Massachusetts. Since that time, Cronos has been fortunate enough to receive awards for Boston Globe Top Business Place to Work, Fortune 100 Best Companies of 2019, Glass Door Best Practices to Work, Computer World Top 100 Places to Work in IT, and BBJ Best Place to Work in Massachusetts. We've continued to grow our company here in Lowell, and we're expanding within the Crosspoint Towers still. As part of this expansion, we're looking to elaborate on our signs that we currently have and had add a new, approximate 800-square-foot mesh sign on the Tower 1 stair tower. We're looking for you to permission for this variance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up the board. Sean?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any real concerns. I think the DPD did have one thing to ask, which is how long the timing, the temporary sign, is supposed to be up to you. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, we're looking for a minimum of a year.
Okay, one year. Yeah, I got no problems with that. And, you know, certainly Cronos has been very big in the city, doing very well. It's fantastic, fantastic work there, and I wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any concerns either. I do want to say that thank you to you and Cronos for being a city of Lowell. I know it's a big investment, so we appreciate all the things Cronos has done for the city of Lowell, and you guys are, you know, great ambassadors for the city. So I think this makes sense from a marketing and, you know, all that perspective. So wish you the best of luck, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
As I've stated the two previous times that Cronos has appeared before our board, if it was up to me, you could put up a movie screen pronouncing your achievements. Thanks for locating in Lowell.
Thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I am also very grateful for Cronos to have taken that building and made it their home and doing a marvelous job. The sign that we approved last time, is that staying on the building for an extended period of time?
So we were actually here in December for a revision of that variance. So that sign is being changed to a smaller sign. So the one that's on Tower 3 is going to be replaced with something much smaller, so that we can also have similar messaging on Tower 1.
Okay. So is there a master plan in the works as far as how you plan on putting banners as you continue to amass all these awards on the towers? I'm just wondering, because it seems like we're gathering a little momentum here with showcasing your awards on the building.
At this time, there haven't been any discussions to add anything to Tower 2.
Okay.
This was our approach for right now.
I wouldn't be surprised if you don't come back, but I guess at some point, if you do come back, I'd like to see some kind of master plan with how you plan on phasing these banners, because it makes sense, and it's a great way to kind of showcase the wonderful work that you're doing there.
Sure, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments or concerns? I think, you know, we've expressed, you know, how well Cronos is doing in that building, and how big of an economic and social boost it's been for us. I do think, in Dennis's point, I think you may need another building to put some award-winning signs on, and we wish you the best of luck. You're wonderful people over there. That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-9 for 900 Chumpsford Street for special permit under Section 6.3 to install a temporary wall sign for one year.
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Very well. Best of luck. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your evening. Moving forward on the new business, ZB 2020-10, variance and special permit, Dean Jenkins at 12 Manchester Street, Section 12.1, subsections A, Section 5.1. Dean Jenkins is seeking special permit and variance approval to construct a new single-family home at 12 Manchester Street, a vacant lot that has merged with 18 Manchester Street, Manchester Street for the purpose of zoning. 18 Manchester Street is in the traditional neighborhood-to-family TTF zoning district, and 12 Manchester Street is in the traditional mixed-use TML zoning district, unmerging the large required variance for the pre-existing nonconforming duplex at 18 Manchester Street, and variance and special permit for the proposed single-family home at 12 Manchester Street, 18 Manchester-- 18 Manchester Street requires variances under Section 5.1 for lot size, lot area per dwelling unit, frontage, frontage yard setback and side yard setback under Section 5.1.10 for lot width and under Section 5.3.2 for usable open space per dwelling unit. 12 Manchester Street requires a special permit under Section 12.1 subsection A for the use and variances under Section 5.1 for the frontage and under Section 5.1.10 for lot width and for any other relief required of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman. I know that there was a lot there.
Yes.
So, for the record, my name's Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, here representing Dean Jenkins, who's also here with us this evening. He's a developer, builder, owns both of these parcels and is intending to develop the new home on this proposal for you this evening. And as you know, he's done a number of homes in Lowell and has been successful doing so. So, I'm going to walk you through where we are. We're at Manchester Street here. Here's Gorham Street. There is a Dunkin' Donuts across the street. We're located right here. There's a cemetery here. There's a mix of multifamily and single families in and out through this neighborhood. And then along Gorham Street, you tend to have the businesses that have direct access to Gorham Street and those businesses are shown here. I actually have copies of this area. I'm going to go through each property one at a time, but I'm going to show this plan here, which shows the two parcels. So, what we have here, here's Manchester Street here. This is an existing two-family that's currently operating there now. There's a driveway here. There's parking in the rear. This fence along the side. And there's a walkway here. This existing parcel currently operates autonomously from this parcel. They were two separate parcels at one time. We have a, we actually discovered that in 1912, there was a three-family actually on this parcel here. That three-family was taken down sometime after 1940 and this has remained a vacant parcel with its own address and its own parcel designation on the Lowell GIS. You know, we realize that they're, they're held in common ownership, so they're considered merged as one. But I just wanted to outline the fact that they were two separate parcels with two separate uses, being a three-family and a two-family here. There's a zoning district line, which is here. This is a zoning district line for a traditional two-family, which would be on this side. And there's a traditional mixed-use on this side here. And then that zoning district line goes down here and heads this way. And then everything below here is traditional mixed-use out to Gorham Street. And there's the Lowell Housing Authority properties here next to us in the cemetery in the rear. This parcel here is 5,000 square feet in lot area and this lot is also 5,000 square feet in lot area. So, for 18 Manchester Street, we are seeking a variance for pre-existing nonconforming aspects of this property. And I'll walk through each variance when I sit down, when I have all the information in front of me. But essentially, the variances pertain to pre-existing nonconforming aspects of this property related to the existing setbacks to that building. We're going to, we want to leave that building as it is. It's currently functioning as a two-family. And what we want to do is make improvements to the lot so that it better is serviced primarily with the parking. In the rear of the property, there's a shed here. And what we want to do is remove that shed. We want to remove a portion of the pavement here so that that setback for the pavement to the lot line is now conforming. So, we can make an improvement with that there. And what we can do is just add a small amount of pavement here and make this a conforming four-parking space area for four vehicles. They were, they currently use it now, but it's, they maneuver the cars around in a way for it to work for them now. But now they can comfortably have four parking spaces for, for the vehicles. What I also wanted to do here is enhance this area here to make a formal walkway that would address these stair, concrete steps that come out of the existing building. So, they were just separated with a concrete walk. And then there'd be a small area in between this first space here so that they're not right up against the car. I'm sorry, I have copies of this plan as well. So, for the variances that we're requesting, so we're requesting 1,500 square feet relief so that where 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit is required. Right now, we have 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit on the existing parcel now. So, we'd be asking for a relief of 1,500 square feet to get to the 4,000-square-foot needed. Additionally, the minimum lot size for this parcel would, would be 6,000 square feet. So, we're asking for an additional variance of 1,000 square feet where we have 5,000 and we would need an additional 1,000 to meet that minimum required of 6,000 square feet. We're also asking for a variance to the lot frontage requirement necessary where 80 lineal feet is required. We have 50, so we'd be asking relief of 30 lineal feet on the frontage. The existing building has a nonconformancy to the sideyard setbacks. The required sideyard setback is 10 some 25. And we have 5.3 some 21.4. So, we would be needing relief of 4.7 feet on one side and 3.6 feet on the other side. There's also another variance needed for lot width. The zoning ordinance has a requirement of 80% of the required frontage is required for lot width. So, 80% of 80 feet, which is the required frontage, would give you 64 feet of lot width, which would be required. And we have 50 feet. So, we're, we'd be asking for relief of 14 feet to the required lot width. We received the comments from DPD today. And looking through those comments, we are fully in agreement with any of those comments, which would require changes. It was shown that the, the building itself is generally what is relevant in the, in the area. And we thought that that was in support of our petition for the variances with reading those comments. So, I believe that that's my presentation for 18 Manchester Street. I don't know if you want to just discuss 18 Manchester Street before going to 12 Manchester Street?
I believe we should open, we're going to have to open it up to the public because they actually flipped it on us, wrong, 18.
What, 12?
12.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I just didn't want to confuse, so we should have done 12 first.
That's fine.
Okay.
They're connected, so we can, the wish of the board is to accept the information we just received on 18 and take it out of order. Or have the discussion, well, they're two separate votes, actually.
They kind of run into each other, so.
They do run into each other, but we will have to take, there'll be two votes on 12 and one vote on 18.
So, I can walk through 12, just if you want to measure the two together?
Let's walk through 12.
Okay.
And then we'll take a separate vote on 12 for two votes and 18 for one vote. In the essence of time and efficiency. Thank you, board members. Appreciate that.
So, 12 Manchester Street. Dean didn't feel as though, in order to, you know, do something that would be a traditional mixed-use, would be viable on this property. It's long and narrow, just doesn't have a lot of room to accommodate parking or a multi-use on the parcel. And we're, we're, there was consideration to, you know, to do a two-family and just almost mirror image the other proposal. Dean felt it was, it was better to, to create this single-family proposal and to be consistent with not needing any, you know, waivers or variances or anything related to the proposed development. So, we're proposing a single-family. Typically, in this district, you might see a retail space down below and maybe an apartment above. The zoning ordinance requires a special permit if you want to do a single-family in a traditional mixed-use district. So, we're here this evening for that special permit. We're also here because we, we, we don't have the required frontage that's necessary. So, we're nonconforming with frontage and again, we're nonconforming with that lot width. So, those are the two variances needed for the proposal on those two items. But the, the proposed development will be conforming to all the, the setbacks in the zoning ordinances for this development. So, we're proposing a two-and-a-half-story single-family. There's elevations, which I believe everybody should have. The front of the building is going to have a small farmer's porch here and this is facing Manchester Street. We're going to be proposing to do three trees. I know one of the comments from DPD was to have those trees be shade trees and we'll most certainly make sure, sure that there's shade trees. The city has a, a number of different shade trees that they prefer and we would work with DPD to have them specify what shade trees they prefer for these three trees we're proposing. This would be a proposed driveway that's 12 and 1/2 feet wide. It'll come to the rear where there'll be two, plus you, two parking spaces for the single-family. There's a small area here, which, which helps the vehicles back out of the space. And I know one of the comments was, was to reduce the impervious area by removing that small leg at the end of the drive. We'd like to leave that leg for a couple of reasons. One is, is that it helps backing the vehicle out. It helps with the plowing. But it also, if you do have a couple of visitors for, you know, to come over and it is a single-family, then it does accommodate for a car there and maybe one behind it, just, you know, just for those type of circumstances. We do find that to be helpful for those two reasons. The other thing is, is that we're be, we're going to be proposing an infiltration trench along the, the drive here as well as an infiltration trench here. So, all the runoff from the paved areas will be infiltrated into the ground. Dean, we built this house in Clinton recently. It doesn't have the garage that this picture has, but this gives you an idea of what the actual building will look like that, that Dean constructed in Clinton. So, walking through the comments provided by DPD, we'll make sure we get an updated set of architecturals that would have a revision date that would be in this year of 2020, not 2010. I know that was one of the comments from DPD. I know that was one of the comments from DPD. Again, DPD recommended to remove that, what they're calling a spur, which is at the end of the drive. We could remove that spur, but we prefer to keep it. So I leave that up to the board on their view on that.
And that's number C, right, Mr. Hammer? Is that you're referring to?
Excuse me?
Is that number C of the comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, C, yeah. So I'm walking through the comments. We have no problem putting up a privacy fence in between the properties if the board felt as though that's more in line with what they're trying to achieve with separating the two parcels and the privacy aspects of that fence. Again, we spoke about the trees would be shade trees along Manchester Street. It was nice to see the comment provided on page four with the design of the building being comparable to other designs along Manchester Street. We know that there's also a house on Blossom Street that the ZBA recently granted variance to, which is somewhat similar to this as well. I believe that was eight?
Eleven.
Excuse me, 11 Blossom Street. The fire department had no comments. The building department said that they would not have a problem with the new single-family residence proposal. The engineering, we fully agree with all the engineering comments as well as the sidewalk comments as well. And we feel as though that this proposal falls in line with all the 18-point requirements of the special permit, which I could walk through each and every one.
Sure is.
But we feel as though that this lot is unique in the size of the lot. It's, you know, we have Dunkin' Donuts right across the street. We have a cemetery in the rear. We have a housing authority property directly next to us, and we felt as though that it's kind of a bookend of a residential neighborhood and it's a small lot. So we felt as though this would fall in line with the goals for our proposal.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and effort that you put in along with Mr. Jenkins in providing this, planning and outlining for this lot with both these homes. That being said, we will separate them, moving to a public hearing. For 12 Manchester Street, anybody wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
In case you have to ask me questions, I'm Dean Jenkins, I'm the petitioner.
Thank you. In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. I'd like to start off with the elevations that were submitted. So the elevations in the floor plans still reference a garage to some degree. So in lieu of the garage, which is your site plan, there'll be a blank wall there with a small window in the dining room. I was wondering if there's any thoughts for the improvements to include windows in the living room?
There will be one window there. Mr. Jenkins, if we could come to the podium, please?
So my plan is to put a window on that side. It just didn't show up on that plan because honestly nowadays, you're kind of, you're spending money to go ahead and get a plan made that, you know, you're a little presumptuous if you go ahead and do that. So I gave you something that I historically billed without the window in there, but it's easily done, and as a matter of fact, I plan on it. That particular house that you're looking at, actually on the side of the house, kitchen side, that's where the slider comes in. So the slider's gonna be in back on this current house that I'm gonna do, and there'll be a window in that kind of dining and then living area along that side as well. Site closes to number 18 and 20.
So as I understand, you intend to revise the plans and elevations and?
The elevation should be set, pretty much set in stone. You've got a flat, level piece of property, you know, I'm gonna keep it probably an exposed foundation of around 2 and 1/2 feet throughout the whole, you know, hole width, maybe as high as three, depends on your water table when you're digging. But say, let's say 2 and 1/2 feet up, and, you know, everything will be at a ground-level elevation.
What I meant by the elevations, the building facades?
Yes.
On the drawings need to be corrected?
Yeah, so, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. McCarthy. We could submit, you know, full sets of plans and have them just brought through the zoning board of appeals just to take a look at them.
Or I think we could condition the approval that revise elevations in floor plans.
Final set of drawings.
Be provided, that correct the garage. And I still didn't understand, why wouldn't you want a window on the side wall where the living room is? Right now, you just have, you have a great opportunity without the garage there.
So one of the things you gotta do is you gotta look at it like how you lay out that property and how you lay out your, the inside of that. So you've gotta lodge double windows in the front of the property, and then along that side, and the way that lays out, that's typical of a wall that you would use to do two things. You're either gonna put your couch there, that side of the property, but reality is, is that people are probably gonna put the TV there. They're gonna block that area in, that section, kind of an L shape, and they're gonna be looking that way. So, you know, I could move a window toward the front, the single bay window to the, toward the front, and leave an area, you know, on that side of the property. But the reality of it is, I don't want to do a whole bunch of windows because you've gotta lay it out.
I am 100% on your side there with, the windows need to make sense. But I do believe in the final analysis, the value of the building would be improved with a window added in the living room on that side and in the master bedroom on that side.
Sure.
And they could crowd the front, so you create a?
Probably what I would do. Honestly, it's probably what I'll end up doing. I'll probably bring them down toward the front just because I think you need those walls and you're gonna need in the master as well, the way it lays out.
And I think that the absence of the garage, you're gonna be looking at a blank wall. Otherwise, it'd be an improvement visually for that building. All right. I had a question on your dimensions on the backing-in area for the parking. You'd have roughly 12 foot 6 for the car to back up. And so I, I agree, I don't think it works if you don't have that
Right.
area to back into, otherwise you'll be backing all the way down the driveway.
Right.
And again, you know, the one thing is that there is the Dunkin' Donuts, and people do spill out of that Dunkin' Donuts parking lot, and at times Dunkin' Donuts is delivering, you know, some items there, and they sometimes parallel along that road. So it makes a lot of sense to be able to pull out forward onto that property. And I don't see how you could do it unless I did it all in stone. So, you know, and I've, and I've done that in the past, but, you know, that's something that usually doesn't stay for long, and people end up doing it themselves anyway, so you're probably best to just decide now.
I don't see walkways, though, on your site plan, either for the proposed deck in the back or for the front door.
It's good observation, yeah. Will the walkway go out to the front sidewalk?
That you provide walkways on the revised set of plans, that include the site plan then as well?
Yep.
All right. Great. I'd like to then move on to, oh, are we doing everything at once? Are we just doing?
No, so we're gonna just go through 12, and I'll read it to the record, 18, then we'll open up a public hearing.
Perfect, okay. So I'm all set with 12. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, generally speaking, I mean, I see this project being workable. Understanding the area and all the types of buildings that are there, it's, it will fit in, it will fit in with the neighborhood. I just had a couple of questions. I'm just looking at the picture of the lot from Google Maps, and there's a set of trees that border the adjacent property off of Gorham Street, a set of shrubs there.
I'm gonna take them down, I think.
I'm trying to think if there's any way to?
I wish I could keep them, but I probably can't for the reason of trying to make sure I get some drainage along that side. I might do some, you know, do something along that edge. Increases the viability of adding something to the front. But I'll probably end up spending most of my landscape dollars on the very front of that house.
Yeah.
You know, and kind of with the trees and some flowers and some?
Yeah, no, I want to check because, I mean, yeah. Understandable. And I know one thing, you know, Ms. Hammer had mentioned about, you know, you're in agreement on installing a privacy fence or shrub, shrubs between the lot lines between 12 and 18, which is fine.
That might be the way to go, actually, right, to add some shrubbery if I had to, or some spacing or whatever between the two houses, you know? That way inside of that fence.
Yeah, but I was, I'm just trying to think about on the other side with Gorham Street on your, on your neighbor.
So I was looking at it closely today, too, and there are big shrubs. So, you know, what happened is the root systems are really large, so you trim those things down and they look horrible, right? When they, when you, once they come in, you know, when the, when the flowers are gone, they really don't fill in properly, right? So, you know, they?
No, I understand. And it's cutting into your driveway, too. You can't really move the driveway over to try to save, save?
Again, I'll spend the money in the front of the property along, you know, and probably along the back, although my neighbors won't be bothering me back there. But, but they, you know, they're, that would make some sense for some people to do that, too. You know, put some buffering in out back.
Yep. No, that was my only, only questions on that, just to find out if there's something we can do on that. But understanding the dimensions, the way they are, I think that, I mean, it's, it is what it is. But as long, if you're agreement about the other side, maybe, you know, shrubbery or fence. I mean, I think, I think, you know, shrubbery line there probably would work, but.
You know, you do arbrevitis and things like that to separate, and they sometimes, you know, depending on who owns the place, they get overgrown, they get, you know, they get invasive to the other guy's property, so, you know. I mean, I guess when the time comes. I'm not sure I need, you know, a prevailing fence, you know, but, but obviously that's at the, you know, whatever you guys seem to think. But I could probably come up with something that might not grow so high.
Yeah.
That could be easily trimmed, you know, some, you know, like low-level type plants.
We can work with DPD on that as far as, you know,
Yep.
working there, some, either way on that, so. But otherwise, as far as this project is concerned, 12 Manchester Street, I'm in full support.
Thank you.
The one thing I did, I do want to point out, and thank you for the copy of the building permit there, Mr. Hammer. It's like, I'm looking at this, and it's like the estimated cost to build a three-family in?
$3,500.
$3,500 in 2019, in 1912, like?
$3,500.
Yeah. This was what it's gonna cost you, Mr. Jenkins.
My father built houses, and the houses he built were $12,000, and if you wanted a two-car garage, it was $1,500 bucks. So, that's when I was a kid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Matt?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I'm agreeing with some of my colleagues. You know, I think this, this construction of the single-family on this lot on 12 Manchester Street, you know, it does fit in with the neighborhood. I don't really have any major concerns. I think my colleagues addressed it, and you, Mr. Hammer, Mr. Jenkins are agreeable to all the comments from the city in terms of like, like privacy fencing and landscape and architect's plan and all that, and the varieties planned, so. Overall, I think, I think this is kind of a good fit for that neighborhood and for that street, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Van Mark.
This one was pretty easy for me. The Department of Planning and Development, their staff supports the requested relief with the recommended changes that were in the comments, which you've adequately addressed, and I had no objection with. It's important to note also that the building department had no issues with code, and the home certainly is neatly fits within the character of the neighborhood. I think it's, it's gonna add, be a nice touch.
Thank you, Mark. That being said, we'll have two separate votes on 12 Manchester Street. We'll have a vote for a variance and a vote for a special permit. We have three conditions that you're in agreeance with. The clerk will read those into the record. Two?
So I had revise?
Revised elevation.
Revised set of elevation plans and floor plans that do not show the two-car garage and shows the walkways. Any, anything else, Dennis?
The windows?
On the windows.
We'll work on the window plan.
And the window plan on the?
Just verbiage that?
There'll be? Add a win, add a window to the right side, you know, right side property toward the front.
On the front.
Both, both first floor and second floor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then install privacy, work with DPD to install a privacy fence or shrub line on the lot line between 12 Manchester Street and 18 Manchester Street. With those conditions through you, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion on ZB 2020-10 for 12 Manchester Street for a special permit approval under Section 12.1.8 to unmerge the lot from 18 Manchester Street for the purposes of zoning and to use the lot as a single-family residence.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Approved for your special permit, and we have a motion for variance.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion on ZB 2020-10 for 12 Manchester Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for frontage and Section 5.1.1.0 for lot width with the previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a roll call? Check and strike out.
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Approved for 12 Manchester Street. I'll read it to the record for ZB 2020-11 of the new business variances. Dean Jenkins at 18 Manchester Street, Section 5.1, Section 5.3.2. Dean Jenkins is seeking special permit and variance approval to construct a single-family home at 12 Manchester Street, a vacant lot that has merged with 18 Manchester Street for the purpose of zoning. 18 Manchester Street is in the traditional neighborhood two-family TTF zoning district, and 12 Manchester Street is in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. Unmerging the lots requires variance for the pre-existing non-conforming duplex at 18 Manchester Street and variance and special permit for the proposal, single-family home at 12 Manchester Street. 18 Manchester Street requires variance under Section 5.1 for lot size, lot area per dwelling unit, frontage, front yard setback and side yard setback under Section 5.1.10 for lot width, and under Section 5.3.2 for usable open space per dwelling unit. 12 Manchester Street requires a special permit under Section 12.1 Subsection A for the use of the variances under Section 5.1 for frontage and under Section 5.1.10 for lot width and for any other relief required on the local zoning. Previously mentioned discussions on this property have been placed in the public record. We'll move right to opening up to the public for comment. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Dean Jenkins.
In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Mark?
18 Manchester, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
Yeah, while the, while there were variances required to preserve the lot, it would still be more conforming than the majority of the homes right there anyway. So again, a pretty easy one for me. I speak in favor.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of questions on the site plan in general. There's, you know, a need to increase the green space if we can. One thing I've noticed is that we have a property at 12 Manchester with a 12-foot, 6-inch backout space. And then we have a property here at 18 Manchester with a 26-foot backout space, more than double.
That's existing, yeah.
Well, is there an opportunity to design the parking in a way that would allow us to have more green space back there and be more conforming with what's required? Is a question.
Yes, there is.
I'll answer it. It's, it's difficult. It's, it's difficult coming back there, 'cause it's kind of a Bow and Alley drive through, to the back. And once you get past it, the turn is a little steep. But if you made it, we kinda turned it just a bit, cutting off a little bit of it as you bent around the back, you might be able to add something to that back right corner of the property. But, you know, it is a difficult kinda pull-in. And that is, as it exists. Now, the people that lived there previous parked four cars there, no problem. I mean, you can still park four cars there, no problem, I've done it. But, you know, in order to conform to the site plan review and to make, you know, make the parking spaces conform to what the, the, um, you know, the city, um, puts out there for requirements, we're, we're now adding basically some paving to the site that, quite frankly, we don't need. And, you know, if that shed did come down and we left the property as it was, I'd still be able to get, I'd be able to get four parking spaces in there that fit, you know, that, that wasn't a big change, but probably didn't meet the city's criteria. So, you, you're caught in a six-one, half dozen another, you know, which way do you wanna go? Uh, I'm willing to do whatever landscaping requirements. I know that on the side of the property, facing the house, the left-hand side, I'm gonna remove all that paving, you know, people would like pave up to the side of the foundations for it. I'm gonna remove that, uh, area along the whole side of the property that currently exists.
That sounds wonderful. So to the area of about three feet wide?
Yeah.
Which would be what I think the city requires?
It's right there along the way, yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
So I'm gonna take that out, that, yeah, right there. So I'm gonna take that paving out. It just, you know, I mean, it backs right up to the other lot. It doesn't really make any sense to be there.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll probably, in order to make sure the drainage between the two properties is like copacetic, I'll build those areas up, create a little trough, you know, a little, little runway out, uh, to the, to the infiltrators. And whatever you get extra off of eighteen, you can kinda head into that infiltrator, too.
Where I was headed with my parking discussion, though, is if, what, what is the, um, size that you're showing for parking spaces, I guess? It's not dimensioned on the plan?
Uh, excuse me, what was the question, what the required dimensions for parking space?
No, what is currently being shown on their plan.
Yeah. Sorry, I was gonna use the scale on that blow-up drawing, but that's not the scale, so. I have it right here, Dean. So these are eight foot by eighteen feet.
Okay.
Now, we are cutting a little bit of pavement back, which is shown on that crosshatching towards the lot line. And we could, um, we could cut a couple more feet back there, if that's something that you think would be, uh, an improvement.
Uh, yeah, so that you'd be kind of aligning with the building edge. That green strip would basically match all the way down to the front at that point, if you were to pull that back to five foot three.
Yes, that would be another two feet. We're cutting it anyways.
And then you end up with a nice green space-
Yep.
That would be continuous all the way down.
Yep, so we could, we could, uh, cut an additional two feet off of that.
It's fine. I mean, it makes sense to me, too.
Yeah, I think it would be an improvement with that side yard, um, and the adjacent property.
It's fine.
Nice. So, so are we in agreement then that that green strip goes all the way from front to back on that side?
Yes, that's correct.
And then maybe we can just condition that you modify the site plan to show the additional green space on the, um, whatever side that is, is that, that's the north, northeast side? To be a continuous green strip from front to back? That'd be great. Win-win.
So I'm gonna take this plan.
Mm-hmm, that's what we're talking about, yep.
And I'll, I'll give this to Francesca.
I think we- We wanna understand it, yeah.
Yeah, well, we gotta review it and I gotta sign it.
Just so that we can just kinda all be on the same page.
And, and just to that point, so we're gonna utilize that proposed, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. McCarthy, but to that point, the proposed sidewalk in the rear is gonna be, um, secondary exit egress for that two-family?
So there are actually two doors, uh, right now, one side door that leads to the ba, leads to the basement. That's all it is. So it really is just kinda, it's not, it's not really used that much, frankly. It's for people taking their items out of the basement. And the back and the rear is, is, is where they enter the building.
Thank you.
Is, um, snow storage identified anywhere?
It's just gonna be in the green strip areas at the rear.
Kinda make an improvement with the snow storage by adding that green strip as well, too, so. You don't have any trees.
Well, we have, uh, some existing vegetation in the front. We have an existing tree.
Is there an opportunity, I guess, where we have those nice shade trees on the adjacent property to continue a shade tree in front here? I don't know if that dimension of seven foot, five inches could support anything or not.
Well, we have a, um, a mature landscaped area existing here that we were gonna have remain. But we could add a tree in there, if you, if you-
You know, you know, if, if we, if we thought about it, like, I could probably come up with that third tree, you know?
Maybe a dogwood or something, something small ornamental tree there.
Bring it a little closer toward that lot line. You know, I think, I think honestly jamming four trees in there or, or more between those two properties might be a bit. You know what I mean, maybe, but I don't know. I mean, you guys tell me, I, you know, as long as the caliper is, is, gives it the time to grow so that people can prune it right, grow it right. Then I have no problem with it, really.
I'd just like to see you work with DPD to improve the landscape plan on that site.
There's already a nice fence along the front of that property that I'm probably gonna, you know, I'm probably gonna, uh, spray paint the silver and use, and it accesses to the driveway, uh, accesses to the driveway and also accesses to the, to the sidewalk. So, you know, there is a space, you know, there is some, some, some space issues relative to trying to fit a tree in along with the mature landscaping that is. There is some mature shrubbery that, quite frankly, I'm not sure I'd wanna keep anyway. You know, once I get to the spring, I'm gonna look at it closer and think, if I have to prune it down, lower it down, whatever, then that would make room for adding a tree or adding some additional landscaping.
Are, are you okay with the condition-
Yes, we are.
-to work with DPD to develop a landscape plan?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't have many, uh, many concerns. The landscape, uh, landscape plan was probably one of the things, to try to see if we can approve that. But, um, I'm glad that it seems, you're gonna work, wanna work that out, especially with the removal of the walkway on the northeast-
Yeah.
Side that, and then turning that into green space, and that, and that'll coincide with the, um, of, again, uh, fencing or shrub, uh, shrub lining-
Yeah, whatever makes sense.
With twelve Manchester Streets, so. And, you know, with that, the, you know, variance approvals, I mean, it will fit in with the rest of the neighborhood based on the situation. You do have, uh, you do have hardship in this instance. And, uh, you know, I'm gonna approve all of that, and I wish you the best of luck, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean Van.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm, I'm in agreeance with my colleagues. Mr. Hammer, Mr. Jenkins are, um, gonna do the recommendations that, that the, that the board wishes and the recommendation from DPD. Um, so I think, um, this, this new, um, home will fit in with the, with the neighborhood as well, so. I don't really have any concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I wanna, um, echo the sentiments of, of my colleagues in, um, looking at these projects. Mr. Hammer, you always come very well-prepared and outlined and, and always willing to work with the board. Mr. Jenkins, you've been, uh, a builder in the Merrimack Valley for decades. I won't throw a number out there to age either yourself or myself, but, um, you're always looking out for the, you know, you're always looking out for both the city, the homeowners, the neighborhood. You take into consideration the whole concept of the community, um, and it's always appreciated. These are, these are, um, there's, they're a big ask on, on property, but the way it's presented and, and how you present yourself is, uh-
I appreciate the comments, and, you know, I, I always look forward to working with the city of Lowell, and everything seems to work out fine.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be an added, uh, I mean, that, that's, you know, it's one of the gateways to the city of Lowell, coming, coming from the backside of Chumston and Barica. And it gets a lot of traffic, and it's gonna enhance that neighborhood, and it's a great part of the city.
I built all those townhouses on Manchester Street in two thousand and three. So, all those ones on the other side of the road.
Very good.
Those, they all still look pretty good, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? So we do have the motions, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, so we have-
Strike that, the, uh, conditions.
Yeah, the conditions are, um, to provide a revised plot plan, uh, that includes removal of the concrete walkway on the northeast side of the lot, of, of the building. Then make that green space, and then to work with DPD on a landscape plan on the existing lot, also.
I think we also included reducing the rear parking by two-
Approximately two feet. But it's gonna run in line with the back facade of the, uh, the side facade of the building. So working with DPD on reducing the parking, existing parking by two feet. Those are the, uh, conditions.
Petitioners in acceptance, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash eleven for eighteen Manchester Street for variance approval under section five point one for lot size, lot area per dwelling unit, frontage, front yard setback, side yard setback, section five point one point ten for lot width, and section five point three point three for usable open space with the previously mentioned conditions.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved with conditions.
Member Peck.
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approved with conditions.
Gentlemen, we wish you the best of luck and continue your success with your-
Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care. Moving further into other business, we have a minor modification at fifteen sixteen Middlesex Street. New Hampshire Science is requesting a minor modification to replace the red message center face of an existing freestanding sign with a multi-colored message, message center of the same size at fifteen sixteen Middlesex Street. The subject property is located in the regional retail RR zoning dis, district. Castor was granted special permit for illuminating sign that incorporated the red message center on eleven twenty-two oh five. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Science, sixty-six Goldledge Ave, Auburn, New Hampshire.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, requesting minor modification, um, to change the existing red LED message center, Castor fifteen sixteen Middlesex Street Lowell, um, to a color unit. The property is owned RR. As you stated, it was granted a special permit for an illuminated sign that incorporated a message center in November two thousand and five. And basically, this board at that point, uh, basically said, uh, the sign was appropriate for the location. Provide more visibility of the petitioner's business. The sign is in keeping with the commercial character of the neighborhood. There'll be no substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Because the sign is appropriate for the location, will not adversely interfere with the surrounding neighborhood. There is a commercial, uh, uh, neighborhood. The red unit has passed its useful life. They last generally for about ten years, so this is a little bit beyond that. Technology's moved on, so the color message centers are much more affordable and flexible, and we're looking to replace the old, uh, unit with a new color one. The signage is not increasing in size. The new faces in the message center are the same size as the old faces. To give you a way, little explanation, these signs are made of, uh, blocks that are about one, a one-foot square, and they're basically attached to a, uh, a frame and then powered from, uh, from behind. So this unit is no, no different in size to the old unit. The top sign cabinet- is not changing at all, that's what, the way it's been from, from, uh, from day one. And so we're not doing anything to that either, except possibly converting it to LED illumination. It's currently fluorescent. Message centers obviously are capable of pro, processing both static and moving images and text. The current sign plays a series of messages and images in red. The new sign will play a series of messages, essentially the same type, but in color. Obviously, Castor employs about twenty-five employees. It's an essential method for communicating the services offered by the organization. The social and economic effects have not changed from the old sign to the new. The new sign is not gonna affect, uh, any, uh, traffic loads or safety, uh, over and above what the existing sign does. The available parking and loading areas remain the same. The sign has no impact on utilities or public services. The, this board found in two thousand and five that the sign was appropriate for the location. Nothing really has changed, uh, vis-à-vis the neighborhood. And changing the sign from red to color will essentially have no effect. It impacts on the natural environment. The interesting thing is that the sign actually, actually uses significantly less power than the sign, uh, that we originally put in, on site in two thousand and five. So I guess it will have an effect on, uh, power consumption. It actually almost halves the power usage. And there won't be any fiscal impact, negative or positive, on city services, the tax base or employment. So it's just a really a, a direct replacement from a red unit to a color unit.
Hey, thank you very much, I appreciate that information. Two thousand and five, like, we go back, we go back a, a few years.
I can't remember whether I was here, I think I probably was, but-
None of us were. I mean, we were all here physically somewhere, but no, no one on the president is on the board. But times do change, and, and, and we are, I know some of the board members will echo the, uh, the upgrade in system, so. Uh, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, in favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to speak, open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Van?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, like, like the gentleman spoke about, I think this message board or, or message center, it's, it's just an upgrade of, um, the sign and, um, the marketing, and it makes sense. Like you said, it, it uses less energy and it's probably more efficient, and, um, there's no, it's just a minor, clear for, up, upgrade. So I think, um, I think it makes sense, so I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you, Van Mark.
No questions with respect to the petition, just a compliment to the ownership on, on employing twenty-five people.
Thank you, sir. I'll goodbye that, Tom.
Thank you. Dennis?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna ask, um, what kind of displays we're gonna be doing here? Because my, um, thoughts are that we're gonna see this potentially come before us for other businesses in the area. Um, I'm trying to think of where we have these signs already, and I think Walgreens and CVS are the two that come to mind.
Hogan Tire, Rogers Street?
Oh, oh, no, I'm just talking about this, this particular thoroughfare that we currently have. And I think Walgreens and CVS are the only other two that maybe have these.
I believe so, yeah, to my knowledge.
And so they're potentially, not that they're competitive by any stretch, but they would see this as technology that they wanna employ maybe as well. So what kind of images are we, uh, putting up on the screen?
Typically, the same images that's, are currently applied. There are some moving images, there are some static images, but they basically advertise Car, Carstar's services. There's nothing, the, the, the content and type of the message that are currently played on the sign are really not gonna change that much with this sign.
How fast are the images changing, I guess?
Things like, wait, there is movement in the image. There's flags wave, cars move, uh, that sort of stuff. It's not like a TV screen, but it's-
Okay, so we don't have a short video being- Okay, so we don't have a short video being played on this by any stretch?
I don't believe that's intended at all. No, I mean, you'll get flags wave, waving patriotic flags and, so there's movement, but this unit is not intended to play a video, you know, like a, a newscast or a picture of a car crashing or, or something like, car being repaired. I can, I actually can't think of what a, what a body shot would actually play. I guess someone beating a car.
So, so the motion is more just to make it a little more engaging?
That's correct.
But the message is static, but the motion is kind of for elements that are in the message?
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Makes more sense.
Thank you.
I feel better about it at least. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have no, uh, real issues with this. I mean, it's obviously an improvement of the, um, existing, uh, signage, um, with the windows and new technology. It's, looks fantastic as far as the clarity and, and whatnot. I know we had a similar instance with, as the chairman mentioned, with Hogan Tire on Rogers Street with this new technology on the, um, on the signs and far as the advertising is concerned. It's escaping me. I know we did some sort of conditions about timing and whatnot, but, um, at this point right now, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't see at this point being an issue, but, um, if it does, I'm sure DPD will get, you know, it'll come back to DPD or something if it becomes an issue, uh, with the neighborhood, so, uh, but overall, I'm, I'm an approval for this minor modification and I wish you the best of luck, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, just to, just to that point, my memory does serve that there, um, there was a condition placed as it related to how many turnovers per sixty seconds. Um, and I think it was all relative to what was being done citywide, so we can just have that conversation and be in agreeance to what we've done in the past as a precedent.
I mean, I guess work with DPD, uh, Fran, could we look into that, um, thing that prior, find out, maybe just try to work that similar, maybe that similar situation?
Yes. I will speak with Jared and Christine and, um, find that language that you used for previous similar approvals and-
Yes.
-institute that as a condition of approval if you'd like.
Okay.
And it doesn't prohibit what you're doing. It just maintains the precedent-
I understand.
Uh, citywide. Um, and it was just in reference on how many changeovers and, um, and the like, so.
Can I just mention something, Mr. Chairman, too, as well? And I mentioned to you, I did notice, and it, it was something that didn't come before the board on us, but there was other businesses that I've seen that have similar instances where they were actually advertising to have other businesses promote their prob- that's, that's a no-no. I just want to make sure that doesn't get-
That is, uh, that is, uh, that's classed as off-premise advertising, which in our terms is totally not.
No, no, I just, we're not, we don't have to condition that. I just think that's, that needs to be, with these new types of signs coming out, um, I think that needs to get out there to the public that you can't, uh, use your business-
To sublet-
To sublet advertisement for another business on these, on these signs as we, because we're, it seems that we're approving these, these signs more and more. They're going to be coming in front of us for reapproval, so I just want to make sure that that's on the record there and out to the public.
Condition is, is it just going to be company-related to Castor?
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. And I, I'm sure that's already written into the code.
I don't even think we really need to condition it. It seems, it seems pretty common sense.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a, the code calls for-
I just want to get it out there in the public, on the public realm, uh, that, you know, in signs in these instances, the city's not going to tolerate, uh, private businesses using their sign, their signage to promote other businesses. I don't, I don't believe so.
Again, Castor's had the sign-
That's not, that's not for us to determine. That's for the city to-
Castor's had the sign since two thousand and five and they haven't done it.
Yeah.
You know, it's not gonna, not gonna happen.
Perfect. So we don't need to condition that. We'll just get the language on the frequencies of changeovers on message. Any other comments or concerns? McCaffrey?
I'd just like, uh, DPD to report back to us what the condition was so that we can all be aware of. And frankly, I'd love to see if DPD would want to develop a strategy on how to manage these signs as technology continues to change and become more maybe aggressive with advertising, that we have a sense as to how we want to handle that, uh, with the special permits.
We, we were asked to comment on that. I know the sign code is under, is undergoing change or I, I think it's being considered. We were asked to comment and we, we actually spent a fair bit of time commenting back on sign code and, uh, yeah, I mean, it is a, we, we don't like the mortgage specialist's type, uh, displays either. I mean, it doesn't do our industry any good, so.
If I may add, I know that Jared is working, he's the one who's working on updating the sign code so I can pass along, um, the message about how to handle these types of signs moving forward and hopefully incorporate that into our new, uh, updated sign code.
And I'm sure certainly, uh, Jared would be helpful in finding that language on the, on the rollover, messaging rollover, because it's gonna be, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. McCaffrey, it's gonna be-
It's gonna take off. I mean, I think that this is technology that we're going to see coming, updating all these other signs that we've approved over the years and, uh, we wanted some consistency and some safety brought to it.
I, I would maybe ask that what we currently have is, we're, we're not restricted from what we currently have.
Correct.
So as long as we can maintain what we have, I, I think we'd be fine with that.
Yeah, your, your petition is going to stay consistent of what, what the board is, is reviewing. We're looking, fortunately, you're, you're the, you're, you're in, you're in tonight on this motion, so kind of peaks our concerns on what others-
Yes.
Uh, and how we're going to improve going down the line.
We pointed Jared towards other, other regulation. We were involved in the dairy regulation, um, and we pointed in towards other, uh, regulation as far as this is concerned.
Great. Thank you. It's been two, since two thousand and five and, and to your point, uh, you've been, you've been up to code and, and up to standards and clearly setting the bar if you're participating in helping source these, um, these things for, uh, DPD and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just, Chairman, this is another, I think, third or fourth one we've come across where is approved a while ago, but there was a condition previously set that all changes to the sign needs to be.
Correct.
Um, I think we've in the past said they don't need that. That condition could be waived. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're all set on that as well. Fran, is that?
Um, yeah, so did, I guess-
So I don't see, we can look to the previous, so you're just referring if there was any previous conditions that those are now left in.
There didn't seem to be any previous conditions on it, but I mean, this is, we've, we've had, uh, this is, I think, like I said, third or fourth time, this is the third time probably, I'm guessing, of signages that was approved, that were approved many years ago where the, there was a condition on it that all changes must be ma- cannot be made without prior approval of the board. And I thought in the past we were-
Yeah, I'm not sure if this petition, I don't believe that they had that condition and if you're not interested in having-
Well, it says it's on the standard language of signage petitions. It was part of the, uh, it looks like it was standard language back in the two thousand and five at least.
Right.
So, uh, again, is that something we just waive the previous?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Certainly, we can waive that.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding, what we're saying is that whatever the condition in two thousand and five was, we would maintain the condition for this sign. Is that my understanding of what, what the board wants?
Well, the standard pri- apparently the standard, uh, language for the petition, for sign petitions back in two thousand and five was no changes would be made to the signage without prior approval of the board, but, um, if that condition wasn't on there, Fran, don't get, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if that language wasn't part of that, they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't be in front of us, correct?
Uh, I'm not one hundred percent certain.
Okay.
Uh, I wasn't at the point of contact for this petition, so I'm not certain.
All right. I don't want to confuse it, I don't want to confuse the issue anymore. We'll just, I mean, we'll agree to waive that, waive that, uh, waive that condition, um, going forward, so.
So the, the reason we're in front of you is because, uh, Christine McCall basically said that, um, the town was looking at message centers and message centers had to come in front of you. I made the argument that Dunkin' Donuts across the road was going to change their sign as a lit sign. They were going to change the, uh, the, uh-
That's right, the condition was.
Oh, okay. Um, I made the point to Ms. McCall that the, uh, site, Dunkin' Donuts sign across the road was going to be changed from Dunkin' Donuts to Dunkin', and they weren't going to have to come for a, for a minor review. And she basically said that, that, uh, message centers were a little examined. But I actually have the, uh, I have the, um, conditions of the original special permit, which say it's granted with signage on the approved plan only, no changes to the signs, well, sign faces should be made without prior approval of the board, which is why we're here, terminate on the tenant, owner of the business, vacating the premises or closing the business, um, sign should be removed in the case of the illuminated sign, blank sign faces should be installed, um, no tenant, new tenant or owner of the business shall cause the new signage to be installed, cause, shall cause new signage to be installed without first petition with the board.
Yeah, that's what we have. That, that's what we have as well. And I, I think the, like I said, the issue was changes, uh, having not be made without prior approval of the board, uh, because the issue's changed over the past few years, over the past almost decade and a half, um, as far as signage is concerned. We, we're just seeing more and more of these coming back in front of us, which don't appear to be necessary, but, um, with that, I'm just gonna, I'll just add on that we'll be waiving that, that condition, uh, going forward on this, prior to this approval, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? May I have a motion?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on, um, my, for minor modification on fifteen sixteen Middlesex Street, uh, for modification of the existing sign to be changed from a, uh, illuminated red sign to color sign, um, and with the condition that, well, work with DPD on the rotation of the, uh, promotions that are, the timing of rotations of the promotions on that rotate, on that sign and also, uh, that we waive the prior condition that no changes is to the signs or sign faces shall be made without prior approval of the board.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Chairman Perrin.
Uh, approve of condition.
Member Peck.
Uh, approve of conditions.
Member Callahan.
Accept modification and approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Uh, accept modification and approve with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approve with conditions.
Mary Lassiter, thank you for coming in and thank you for outlining in such detail and we wish you continued success over there.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your help in participating, uh, with Jared and the DPD.
No problem at all.
Well done.
One interesting thing about this is the, when the sign was purchased in two thousand and five, it was about five thousand dollars more expensive than the sign they're buying now. It's pretty amazing.
It is amazing.
I looked at it the other day and I thought, wow.
It's good.
Okay, so that's an application of Moore's Law.
There you are.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Moving on to other business, we have minutes for approval for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Anyone have any concerns, edits, reviews or comments? May I have a motion to accept?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Accept the minutes.
Member Peck.
Uh, accept the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Accept minutes for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Member McCarthy.
Accept the meeting minutes.
Member Briere.
Acceptance.
Meeting minutes have been accepted. Uh, moving on, I just wanted to take a, a minute. Um, I want to make comment to, uh, Ms. Christine McCall has been promoted to City Economic Development Director. Uh, she's leaving DPD, uh, after several years of service in that department. Um, she's, she's led a, a, a group of her colleagues, uh, to much success, um, as far as updating, organizing, communicating, requiring, um, that the office itself has, um, has, has grown in, in, um, its ability to communicate to the board very effectively. Uh, and that's a credit to, I believe, the youth and vigor that's in that office. Um, we, we, we are, we are very fortunate to have a, a bright young group of professionals and Ms. McCall has, has led them, uh, extremely well. And I just wanted to thank her for her service to this board and to DPD and I wish her the best of luck. I'm sure her role as a mentor in that office will, uh, still continue to provide us with the successes we have as we've had with the, uh, the writing of the FAR and, and some of the other projects that the department has taken on. And I wanted to, um, express to her my sincere congratulations. I will miss her calling me off as Chairman Perrin, uh, for the vote, but eloquently, Fran has taken the spot and your, your bright future's ahead of you as well, so I wanted to make that comment. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, sorry, I just want to echo the same comments and, um, congratulations to Mrs. McCall and her, um, promotion to the Director of Economic Development. Um, you know, in my interaction with her, she's always very professional, always very helpful, um, always, um, just very kind, uh, um, so I think it's a good move for the city and for that department. Um, you know, I, uh, and, and I, I look forward to working with, uh, uh, Ms. Alvarez and, and Ms. Sigliano, uh, as, as we move forward. So I do wish, uh, Ms. McCall, uh, the best of luck on her new endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly share the same sentiments, uh, of, uh, yourself and, uh, the Vice Chair and I'm sure the remainder of the board, uh, in congratulating Christine on her promotion to, uh, within the city, uh, to the Economic Development Department, I believe you said. Um, it's, uh, Christine is just a absolute wonder to work with. She's extremely bright. I just remember, I remember the first day that she was there, uh, training with Judy. If I was Judy or Joe, I can't remember, but, and, uh, she just worked, she worked her way up to senior planner and, uh, you know, it's gonna be, no, I'm gonna, she's gonna be missed on this board. She's, uh, and, and in the department, but it's, uh, a testament to the city and, uh, no, that she's working her way, uh, up in the city and it's, uh, I guess it's not goodbye to Christine, but we'll see you on campus. So, uh, thank you again, Christine, and the best of luck.
Thank you, Sean. Lassiter?
I, I just want to add that, um, I really congratulate the city for seeing her potential and, uh, choosing to elevate her because I think the city will be extremely well-served with, uh, this choice and, uh, she brings a lot of tenacity and energy and thoroughness and diligence to her new position and I'm really glad to see the city doing this. We will miss her though very much. At least I will.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
I think her fine work speaks for itself and has resulted in this, uh, deserved promotion and, uh, future career plans with the city.
Thank you. Happy and sad. Like a motion to adjourn.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Meeting is adjourned.